Alright, welcome everybody to town hall meeting number 106. It's July 16th, 2024. And today we're joined by Haley, Ayo, Kali, Ian, Jeffrey, Jennifer, Karim, Nishi, Lulu, Martin's AI Notetaker, Mikasa, and Jamie. Thanks a lot for being here. Good to have you. As you can see on the screen, a little overview of the agenda, starting off with a couple of mentions. And then we'll have Jennifer mention a bit about the Nuneet community calls. And after that, we'll have space for the AI Ethics Workgroup and the Global Ethics Initiative. If there's any time remaining within the slot, there's also room for other topics. Before we dive into that though, a quick reminder on what the ambassador program even is and what we do. Basically, we're a group of like-minded people that all are in tune with the mission and vision of SingularityNet and want to contribute to its growth. We have a pretty, yeah, pretty big amount of self-organizing workgroups on a wide variety of themes. So if you're interested in helping out, I'm sure there's a workgroup that suits you. Go up onto our Discord server, you'll find a "Getting Started" channel there, that will get you get started. Then a couple of mentions, I'll keep them short. A quick update on the Q3 budgets, they're all done, basically. Over the past week, we had a couple of calls sorting out the final objections. And yeah, we're good to go, pretty much. So for the coming month and a half, we won't have to think and discuss budgets. So that's quite a relief, not gonna lie there. Well, of course, I have to do a bit of, yeah, reviews on how the process went and what we can do better next time. Then, yeah, quick update on Ben Gertzel's Twitter account. It was compromised and spamming fake airdrop links, which, yeah, it's just proper annoying. Yeah, to put it, Twitter support is sometimes there, sometimes not. It is recovered now, so just wanted to mention it, just to make sure that if you ever see an airdrop link, just verify it, go to a different channel, ask about it, and people will tell you it's a scam. And yeah, just a quick reminder there. Luckily, there were, I think, two people only were victim of this, but that's still too many, of course. And then another, yeah, security-related mention, there was an exploit on LiFi. It's a DeFi protocol, and this is also being used in Singularity DAO on their exchange page, which is, yeah, swapping one token for the other page, that does use LiFi in the background. And there's a link, I'll try and grab it in a bit and put it in chat, where you can just paste in your address and see if you're affected by this exploit. It's on revoke.cash, which is a, yeah, pretty well-known service for checking token approvals. So yeah, I'll share it in chat, it's something to double-check, like, better safe than sorry. So I wanted to call that out. I'll give the floor to Jennifer, who's the Marketing and Community Lead at Nuneet, to share about the Nuneet contributors program.
Awesome. Thank you, Peter. Hi, everyone. It's really nice to be here and thanks, Peter, for reaching out, for me to jump on and to let you guys know about the Nuneet contributors program. So as Peter mentioned, I'm Jennifer and I'm the Marketing and Community Lead at Nuneet. And I'm here today to give an overview of our newly launched contributors program. This is a continuation or kind of re- and/or rebranding of our previous airdrop program, which we launched, I think, maybe a year, year and a half ago. But yeah, we wanted to kind of give it a fresh overhaul. And we think contributors program is a more fitting name because it's basically to get people to contribute to the platform, whether it's development, marketing, you know, whatever contributions there is. And so, yeah, the contributors program has and is being designed to harness the collective talent and enthusiasm in our community and in the ecosystem as well. And the program's also at the heart of Nuneet's open source philosophy, emphasizing transparency, collaboration, and community-driven development. We are working with our community to create a structured and rewarding environment where contributors can innovate, collaborate, and drive the Nuneet platform forward. Our main goals for the program is promoting active participation, ensuring meaningful contributions, fostering collaboration and innovation, and finally amplifying and spreading the word about Nuneet. So two weeks ago, we held our first call, where we introduced the program, the goals. And, you know, we also sent out a interest form for our community members, which I can link in the chat here. And if you do want to catch up on the first call, I'll also link our YouTube video for that as well. So as Peter mentioned, our next call is next Monday, July 22nd, at 4:30 CET, and that's going to be on Discord. So internally, we've been working on organizing several key phrases, or phrases, sorry, of the program to ensure a smooth implementation and progressive development with our contributors. And we'll discuss this more with our contributors roadmap, which we'll be unveiling in our call on Monday. But for now, I can give kind of a high-level overview. And we aim to approach the program in four phases. Initially, we'll look at the setup, operations, with the main objective being establishing the foundational operations and infrastructure for the program with the help of the community. And so this is going to be the main focus for the next couple of weeks. And then coming into phase two, we'll be looking at expanding the program out with a focus on refining the operational processes as well as building the initial tech, technical contributions and testing and providers. Then phase three will focus on attracting more technical contributions and fostering a strong technical community. And then phase four looks at kind of scaling and sustaining. Of course, aside from technical contributions, there'll always be operational, marketing, documentation, translations, and strategy skills to help support and develop each phase of the roadmap and each phase of the contributors program. And so, yeah, we'd love to invite you to join us in this journey. You know, by participating in the Nuneet contributor program, hopefully you'll have the opportunity to help drive the future of decentralized computing, gain valuable experience, and collaborate with like-minded individuals, and hopefully make a real impact in the open source community. And we're part of Linux Foundation, Linux Foundation Edge, and CNCF, Cloud Nation Foundation, which are some of the biggest open source communities there. So hopefully we can make a real impact there. And perhaps bring some of the knowledge and experience gained from the hugely successful SNET Ambassador Program. And I can see there's a few members here that joined in on our first call. So yeah, thanks for your time and hopefully I'll see you, some of you, next Monday, July 22nd, half for CET on Discord. Yeah, thanks.
Thanks a lot for that. I did put on the, maybe the slide is incorrect. I did put UTC instead of CET, I'm not sure.
I think it is CET because I had to double-check that myself and it's gone out as CET. So unless on the Discord server it's wrong, but I checked the statuses we have out today.
Yeah, on the announcement, yeah, I'm wrong there. So that's 14:30 UTC, just for clarity.
Awesome. Thanks, Peter.
Would there be any questions or remarks in the room? While we have Jennifer here, might as well. Feel free to raise your hand or speak up. If not, I can only conclude, it was very clear. I did see the replay of that call, was it, yeah, it was nice to see the known faces from here popping in there as well.
Yes, yes. So it was good. We just need to, we have issues with recording on Discord, which we're trying to figure out OBS is not being our friend as of recent. So we're trying to figure that out.
I do see a question in chat. It's a big, it's a big question in a way. What's Nuneet's overall function? Would you have an answer to that?
That is quite a big question. So at Nuneet, we are building a decentralized computing platform, essentially. And it's built on the, looking at like, kind of the architecture, right? It's, we're building on this principle of open-ended computing. And basically, what that means is that we should have a very scalable and adaptable platform for decentralized compute. And we rely on community members to provide compute into the system. And then we work with, you know, individuals or, you know, ecosystem members who need compute to power for AGI and everything. So we'd be the compute layer of the ecosystem, I guess, and of any other project. And we're also open source. So that means, you know, and this is kind of where we want to bring the contributions program is, that we want to get community members to come in and build features and functionalities onto the existing platform. So for instance, we have running decentralized machine learning on, or sorry, running machine learning and AI models on decentralized GPU. So that was one case that we were funded from Carano, and that's a feature on the platform. And so because we're open source and this is where we want to bring the contributions program is that we want to encourage people and support people that if they have an idea for a feature or functionality onto the Nuneet platform, that we would be there to support like financially as well as support like for like marketing or like development-wise as well. So yeah, that's kind of Nuneet. But basically, it's the compute layer, centralized compute layer.
Nice. Anyone else a question? There we go. I missed the earlier parts. How can one contribute to open source projects on Nuneet? How's the contribution?
Sure. So right now, we're actually in the midst of refactoring our DMS. So up until now, contributions have been mainly focused on like providing compute as well as running tests. So right now, what we're doing is refactoring or basically rebuilding the DMS. So once that DMS is refactored or rebuilt, we will kind of open it up. We'll have the document, we actually have our kind of documentation ready to go, just going through some final processes. So basically, the contributions will be open then to develop on that. As well as from like a contributors program, like all of our code and everything is open source. I can share GitLab here as well. So people are free to come in and have a look and see if there's any issues that, you know, you guys can fix or, you know, want to work on. And what we're actually doing with, thank you, Peter, yeah, device management system, which is basically Nuneet and Nuneet as a whole. What we're trying to do with the contributions program as well is we are trying to get people used to our GitLab and know how to work Nuneet's GitLab. So when we look at our contributors program, task management will all be done on GitLab using the same development process and that the Nuneet team is using. So right now, it's open for contributions. We don't have an exact framework set out yet because that's what we want to kind of establish with the contributors call. Hopefully, in a couple of months as well, we kind of do hackathons, where we'll kind of look and see, okay, we can support for some features or functionalities to be built on top of the platform and that can then be used, will support like via NTX to help build those features and functionalities. And the other thing as well, we will, from our development process, we will be rolling out kind of issues that the community can work on. And we have a couple of those already. They've just been kind of sitting there idly because we've been building the community program around it. But yeah, everything on our GitLab is open source. You know, I think things will become more apparent once we have the contributors program set up and people understand how to use the GitLab. Things will be a lot easier and we can get some people in to contribute to our code as well as set up the structure around the boarding as well for that.
Good stuff. Thanks a lot. Yeah, I put it earlier in chat, but it's, if you're not on the Discord server yet, it's discord.gg/nuneet. Yeah, there's tons of information on there, so can probably suggest going there. Alright, I think that's it. Unless you want to add something, you can.
No, I'm just gonna send the, I'll send the form for the contributors program. I've just sent our link, links page as well, which has everything you need to know about Nuneet. And I'll send the recording as well from our first town hall, or contributions program, sorry. Thank you.
Amazing. Thanks a lot. Alright, yeah, feel free to stick around. If not, it's also fine, as you wish, of course. And then would bring us to the next topic, which my slide is horrible, not gonna lie there. Like to give the floor to, well, I see Haley, I see, I think Lulu is here still. I think Esther was trying to be joining but stuck in a call. I'm not sure who I even should give the turn, because this came up during the earlier AI Ethics Open Office Session. So I'm not fully prepared to this, but Haley is.
I'll kick off and Lulu can also chime with anything that I've missed or needs to be added, and hopefully Esther can join, can join as well. We have a couple of announcements slash requests, I guess. So SingularityNet will be shortly announcing a virtual roundtable session happening. It's scheduled currently for August 7th at 4:30 UTC. It's still being finalized, which is why we haven't announced it to the community yet. But this session is, Ben, with a number of guests. And it will be bringing some of the BGI beneficial artificial general intelligence themes of how do we ethically build AGI that's beneficial to humanity at large. And it will be sort of bridging that conversation into some of the more technical AGI 24 proceedings. So the AGI 24 conference is highly technical. It's where researchers in the field of AGI will be presenting the very latest research and developments in AGI. So very technically, you know, the math that they're using, the computer science techniques that they're using, as well as some really interesting research papers into ethics alignment and building beneficial AI AGI systems. So this roundtable session will sort of bridge that with some of our technical components and some of our more ethically aligned or, I don't know how to bridge that, but these, bringing these topics again. So this will be a very interesting conversation, Ben and guests, that they can hopefully stimulate some of the conversation around how do we integrate these themes and global governance of AI and API, which of course is the, one of the goals of the Global Ethics Initiative, which the naming contest is ongoing. We received a pile of great name suggestions. The naming suggestions has closed now and we'll be announcing the polling method, voting method. So keep an eye out for that. So the specific announcement slash request is that that will be happening. And then we'd like, we talked about this earlier in the Open Office Hours, we'd like to invite the Ethics Workgroup and then ambassadors generally to help host a virtual set of roundtables following that event. So after Ben and guests have their live stream discussion, inviting the community to come into an ambassador-led, not moderated set of roundtables, breakout groups, and in probably a Zoom, a Zoom room. So we're looking for interest in that. The Ethics Workgroup folks have already expressed interest in helping with that. But generally, to the ambassadors, we'd like to see who's interested in helping organize, facilitate, and build that system so that it's a community-led initiative. We envision inviting the community in and having a little bit of a introduction and then breaking into four or five roundtable sessions. We've already got some roundtable volunteers. Yemo wants to, or has been asked to lead a Latam Community Ethics Discussion Roundtable. Esther and I will lead a roundtable on governance. Lulu and Alex Kogira will follow on their roundtable discussion from the BGI Conference in March and bring that into this space. And then we're hoping the AI Ethics Workgroup or the ambassadors generally will suggest and lead a couple of additional roundtables. We'd like to get the ambassadors' help organizing the entire piece, leading the entire piece, participating in each of the roundtables to help document and then bring sharing from each of the roundtables back to the bigger group so that we can all be enriched by the discussions that we break into and have. And just generally help us make this a really cool decentralized community event. We're hoping to put the idea out and let the ambassadors run with it. So that's exciting and inspiring and interesting to the group. And I don't know how to organize that in a decentralized way. And I'm hoping that that invitation will inspire the investors to help move that forward. Lulu, Esther, and I are of course available to help and to coordinate. So that's the first piece. And then the second similar idea is, is we would like to suggest or call on the ambassadors to help hold some virtual components to the AGI 24 conference itself. So the live conference, of course, will be in Seattle this year. And we have a lot of great events planned for it. But we'd love to get the ambassadors' help in creating a better experience for virtual attendees. We've held in the past watching, you know, watching groups so that people could be watching the live stream, commenting, and having their own rich discussions around what's being shared. But there's also the potential for additional engagement and conversations, possibly even outside the hours of the conference, which aren't convenient for many time zones around the world. Esther is excited to help lead and guide and serve as a nucleus for interest in elevating the virtual experience of AGI 24. And again, I, we throw that out to the ambassador community to see who's interested and who wants to step up and help build what that might look like. So again, Esther can't, is stuck in a meeting and can't be here yet. Hoping that she can join shortly and add her own pieces. So I'd love to hear, Lulu, if I forgot anything, please, please share or if any of the ambassadors are inspired to discuss how we might take this forward. I'd love to hear a little bit about that. I also want to be sensitive. We have other things that we need to cover and this isn't the space perhaps for deep discussion.
I don't have anything more to add. I did drop in the chat the date again and the tentative time that we have. But again, like that, that time might change our slides slightly, but just to keep that in mind, hopefully we'll be able to resolve that soon as to when. Yeah, other than that, yeah, when it comes to understanding roundtable formats, if people that are interested don't understand, just feel free to reach out to us to understand more of how those would happen or like what kind of topic, like what kind of topics that, topic ideas. I am, I'm guessing there might be a vote of some sort between you all. Many people are having different ideas, but yeah, we can always help with understanding what kind of topics would be good. Other than that, I don't have much else. I don't know if somebody is reporting back from the Ethics Workgroup today. I know Vani's not here. I don't want to call anybody out, but I don't, I don't know.
I mean, I'm here. I don't know if you really wanted me to speak or what you wanted me to speak about, but I can certainly help out if you'd like me to.
Oh, no, I was just asking, I didn't know if Vani appointed somebody to come and do a report back for today?
Oh, not that I'm aware of.
Somebody else was speaking as well. I don't know if somebody had something that they wanted to input? No? Okay. I know that in the Ethics Workgroup that a lot of the work has been around doing the first half of the strategy, of the strategies for the group, which they've been broken into three groups. And the first draft of the writing is supposed to be finalized this week, which congratulations on y'all for getting together and getting it going. And then there will be a review time coming, upcoming for that. So, and I know that the AI Ethics Forum was also opened recently. So if you are interested in discussing AI ethics-related topics, please feel free to go there on Discord and have those conversations.
Put check on the room. Any questions, suggestions? I had a bit of a, it's a bit of a long stretch and also not super short term, I reckon, but at some point, Sophia First will be live, right? Could be a decent venue for fishbowl interviews, wandering around the metaverses. That's already, well, it filters a little bit. I'm not sure what the effect of that filter would be on people that are in the metaverse, but could be interesting.
It's amazing. We've talked about having an AI survey chatbot. You know, having Sophia talk with you herself about ethics and AI, global AI governance would be very interesting. Fascinating idea. Thanks.
Not gonna be next week, but yeah, I definitely see that happening at some point.
Yeah, I did, I did put it in their ear also earlier on when I was originally hired for this position. I was kind of like, hey, you know, potentially we should do this. And it's like, yeah, let's talk about it when the time comes and. perhaps the time will be soon.
Yeah, okay. Cool. All right. Looks like, oh, I see, Colly, uh, you can actually already, um, I believe it's still live at least. It, it used to be live and maybe let me quickly check. Hmm, no, still upgrading, shit. Uh, Sophia used to be live on uh chat dot Sophia first dot AI, but um she's in maintenance and this has been the case for some time already, so. Shouldn't be long, but it will come back. Yeah, fair. Oh, you, you were aware of that. Cool. All right, um. Yeah, if there's no further questions or comments on the topic. Uh, from my side, agenda-wise, that's it for today. So there technically is, is still room for open topics. If anybody has any questions or ideas or introductions or anything they want to share, you most definitely can. And if not, this might be the shortest town hall Fuzzel ever attended. He just joined. But we're already uh getting to the end. That's gonna be a record for him.
I'd love to get a feel for um how many ambassadors are, are planning to join the AJI twenty-four conference, Colly, I said that you're already registered for the virtual, which is fantastic. Are, are many ambassadors planning to attend and, and is there interest in, in hosting or, or at least attending some portion? And is there interest in, in hosting some virtual components that, that help people who can't pretend live have a more engaging experience?
I know I am.
Right, well, that was all I, I'm just curious about. And uh, I guess we'll find out.
Fair enough, fair enough. Um, I do see a question by Onyeka on, uh, if I can give a quick update on today's governance call. Um. I can, most certainly, um. I also did at the very start, basically the, the strategy proposal has passed, so all proposals have been approved by now. It's uh sixteenth, uh mid of the month, which is well, two months earlier than the last quarter. So that's in itself, uh, you know, we were aiming to have it done before the quarter starting, but honestly, I, I'm, I'm still quite satisfied by uh having it done by now, so. I mean, that's a, a very short update. I'm not sure if that's somewhat. Uh, this is satisfying answer. Onyeka, feel free to ask. Or elaborate or. All right, um, yeah, final check on the room. Any questions, any? Anything, basically, anything goes. Feel free to uh ask or speak up. And if not, we.
So I, 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 I was actually uh get the part of the strategy, getting consent, more about the, what does it look? And do we now have a particular percentage of the costs that you expect to go?
I'm, I'm having really, having difficulty hearing you properly. I, I got the part that it was not so much about strategy, but then the part after that I missed.
Can you hear me now? All right, I said, um, I got the part of um strategy getting consent, but um on it, what about writers' work group? And also, um, do we now know the exact figure for the percentage codes?
I did get the, the part on writers' work group, but the third thing you put there, I'm, I'm sorry, not trying to be annoying. Uh, so let me answer your writers' work group first. Um, that was basically solved uh during um uh yesterday's, let me. Ah, yes, uh during uh treasury uh guilt. It was um sorted. The, the concerns raised. Um, the person raising those concerns was in the call as well. And yeah, we worked it out and the consent was uh given. So that's approved, um, was approved yesterday. And then during today's governance work group, uh, we were not able to fully resolve the concern, uh but seeing there were uh top of mind, I believe, six consents and one objection. Um, in the third iteration of the process, um, that was not enough to block the proposal from um, yeah, uh being approved. And it did come with a, yeah, some, some more procedural, um notes slash requests slash things to keep in mind. Um, that's basically like the concerns raised in um a quarter, apologies, I O eight to one. I thought it was six to one, but fair, eight to one. Maybe six to one was from an earlier uh iteration then. Um. Yeah, just a note on like, uh, the concerns being raised to also in the next quarterly, um, proposal to be aware of those and also have a check against them. So even if the concerns aren't um fully resolved, um, to ensure that they still receive attention during the next iteration. I hope that someone answers the second part and the third part. And I'm sorry, you have to, the percentage cut, do we have the exact figure? That was the third one or the, the last part I didn't get, I imagine. Um. Well, according to uh rules we established about a year ago, um it's eighty percent uh majority is required. Then if there's not full consent after two iterations. And yeah, so eighty is the, the, the cutoff percentage. I hope that answers. Final check, going once, going twice. Any questions, comments, things to add to the call? And if not, it's gonna be a short one today. When do we begin phase two of the merger? Uh, that's the most asked question currently on Telegram. Um. It's a very boring answer. Um, it's to be determined. And yeah, I wish I had a concrete date. Um, unfortunately, there's external dependencies, uh, which put us in a position where we cannot put a concrete date right now and yeah, be confident in actually keeping that date. So yeah, it's proper boring answer, but it's be, yeah, it's, it's to be determined and stay tuned for announcements. That's, that's basically the, the current answer. The good thing is it won't have an end date. So while the beginning is um unclear, the end is yeah, there's, you will have years and years to migrate. So there's no rush, uh, in that sense. Of course, there's just uh curiosity and, and wanting to, to get there. Um, yeah, well aware that's proper frustrating to uh, to not have this dead concretely set uh in stone, but unfortunately, that's all we can do right now. All right, if nobody's raising hands or asking questions, I think uh we'll have a short one today. Cool. That's a wrap. Thanks all for, for being here. And yeah, hope to see you in one of the many upcoming community calls. There's um ten more this week, so you won't have to be bored. And if you're bored in the meantime, uh, feel free to hang out on Discord. And we'll talk there. Thanks again.